The Town of Carver Planning Board Meeting of September 25, 2018. And this is being brought to you by Area 58 Community Access Media. If we could please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a sign-in sheet. I believe it's on the table there for anybody that, if you haven't signed in for the public hearing, if you would please use that and sign in. We're gonna take, we're gonna start the meeting, we're gonna take things out of order. We're gonna start on the applications of Ediville Land Holdings requesting a special permit approval for pursuant to sections 2230 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw that's located on Pine Street in Carver, Mass. And I believe we're going to, this meeting isn't, this public meeting isn't gonna be done tonight.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. If it pleases the Board, the applicant has asked for a continuance to our October 9th meeting so that we can clarify some of the outstanding matters, including the photometric analysis and also the reciprocal license for the right-of-way issue on Pine Street.
So, we need to...
Mr. Chair, if I could make a motion to continue the public hearing for Ediville Landing Holdings to October 9th at 7:00.
A second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, that will be moved to October 9th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board.
All right. Next, we have a public hearing on the application of, let me just read the, instead of reading it twice here, we have a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 25, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of Priolo Plymouth Street Realty Trust requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Zero Plymouth Street, Carver, Mass. Its access is map 18 lot 8 to allow a 32-unit age-restricted townhouse development in a residential agricultural area. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Town Clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackie-Chia. And it was published Carver Reporter, published dates September 14th and 28th of 2018.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'm gonna excuse myself from the hearing as I am a director of butt-er to this project.
All right. Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Cole, do you have anything to say to start off?
Sure. Contained in your packets, first, I'd like to say thank you for being our willful alternate this evening so we can proceed with the public hearing. Contained in your packets, you'll see a copy of the Technical Review Committee's memorandum that was drafted on August 2nd. It was on August 2nd that the TRC convened in Town Hall with the representatives from the Fire Department, Conservation Commission, the Planning Department, the Building Department, DPW, and the Health Agent Kevin Ford. Inside the memo, you'll see some comments that are particular or some concerns that are particular to the relevant departments. Behind the TRC memo, you'll see the individual memos from each relevant department and agent citing what their concerns are, as well as a peer review that was conducted on July 9th by Fussin O'Neil. Sam Hemingway signed that memo. Many of those issues have since been addressed by the applicant, and you'll find that the very last section of your packet, you'll see the applicant's response. I think we're joined this evening by Mr. Rigo from Riverhawk Environmental who can give us some information with regard to the merits of the project and hopefully answer any questions that the Board might have for us.
Okay, great. Thank you. Give us your name and...
Sure. For the record, my name's Bob Rigo. I'm with Riverhawk Environmental. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Priolo Realty Development, excuse me. And I don't know what the best, should I stand up and present to a quick overview of the project?
Yes, probably. And if you could just kind of pull the microphone as far over as you can so we can, everybody can hear this at home as well.
Okay. The project is located on Plymouth Street. It's on the southerly side and west of the intersection of Main Street and I guess Plymouth Road by a few hundred feet. The site, as it exists today, is a wooded parcel. It's kind of irregular in shape. It totals 17.35 acres. There's one small area, frontage, along Plymouth Street, and the rest of it expands to the west and east behind some of the existing homes along Plymouth Street. We're permitting this project tonight under the Townhouse Development Regulations. Under that regulation, what's required is that we kind of assess the existing parcel and we determine the net usable land area. So, we minus out the wetland areas and then 65 feet from those wetland areas to come out with a net usable land area. That calculation ended about 16.4 acres. And you're allowed, if it's an age-restricted development, you're allowed to do two units, basically, per acre. So, we're allowed, under this scenario, to do 32 units. And that what's, we're proposing tonight is a 32-unit age-restricted development. And as mentioned, there's some wetland resource areas that exist off the western side. Those are off the property. Those have been delineated, excuse me, and there's also a small little pocket of wetlands on the eastern side, far eastern side of the property. So, those two areas have been delineated, and we will be going next week in front of the Conservation Commission for a request for determination of applicability, just to kind of approve those two lines. What we're proposing is the 30, I'll get into one for you, 32 units, two-bedroom units. The units, there'll be 10 three-unit buildings, so 10 triplexes, and then a single duplex unit on the western part of the site. This singular access into the site, there's, there will be one roadway that comes in that's 24 feet wide, extends to a circle, and then it offshoots to the east and the west to get to the area where we have the units cluster around. We kind of cluster the units around those two areas, kind of maximize the open space and try to get as much contiguous open space that's clustered together as possible. One of the concerns during the initial permitting and meeting with some of the people in the town, they were concerned about the access for the Fire Department and having a second means of egress through this site. So, what we're proposing, and this has been vetted through numerous meetings with the Fire Department and also the Town Planner, that we're gonna have a 12-foot-wide grass paved strip. So, it's a, they put down this geo membrane that allows you to grow grass, but then still in the future to drive trucks over and to support heavy axle loads. So, the, what we're proposing is to basically, the drainage will be kind of collected in catch basins and directed to one of two drainage basins. There's a basin along the westerly side of the road coming in, and there's one along the southerly side of the circle. Basically, the natural topography, as it currently exists, drains down to a low point in this section of the site, so we're just taking advantage of that and bringing these into. What we're intending on doing is infiltrating 100% of the runoff that is generated, additional runoff from both the homes and the roadways. In addition to the, to that, we're also proposing to put infiltration basins at each triplex unit or duplex unit along the sides. We'll have a total of two small infiltration dry wells, so try to infiltrate as much of the water at the point of where it's generated prior to, prior to it getting to the larger drainage system. We're also, we're proposing, in terms of septic, we're proposing two areas, which I'll show in the overall plan here. We're proposing an area, again, kind of on the far western portion of the site and the far eastern portion of the site. And we've already been out with a Health Agent and done percolation tests in each of these areas, and we've prepared basically full septic design plans, which are submitted with the plans that are in front of you. Those have not been submitted to the Board Health yet for approval. We're seeing how this process goes, and then we'll make that finally. And then, we propose, the roads were designed and built in general conformance with the, they were 100% conformance with the townhouse development standards, where possible, in compliance with the subdivision bylaws, also the subdivision construction bylaws in place in the town. The roads, we tried to keep as close as possible to limit the amount of cuts and fills on the site, so we tried to keep the roadway to kind of match as much as possible the natural terrain, which is a little bit up and down. But we were able to keep all the roadways to less than 6% grades on all the roads, just shows the cross-section and, you know, with the goal of keeping that, those cuts and fills to a minimum on the site. And that's probably the general gist of it, what we're proposing. The units, these are very schematic, typical unit for the footprint shown. They're designed to be marketable to people who are over 55. They're a first-floor master bedroom. They do have it upstairs with a second bedroom, but they're designed, you know, for an older type of customer. That's probably only half of the overall general presentation.
So, Stephen, when we were looking at this, the Fire Department has made some comments. Have all those comments been responded to?
They have, Mr. Chair, and I will draw the Board's attention to enumerated bullet nine in the Fire Department's memo. Should perhaps be the third or so in the packet and sequence. Quoting from Jesse Boyle, the Assistant Deputy Fire Chief, "The road length exceeds 600 feet dead-end road limit. As a result, a Fire Department access road is required, which you, the applicant, have provided. The proposed grass two, I'm sorry, grass paved two material is acceptable pending engineering documents stating that said surface can support the weight of a fire engine approximately 52,000 pounds." At the back of your packets, you'll see Attachment or Exhibit A, excuse me, Attachment A, Grass Paved Two Documentation. There's perhaps 18 or so pages that details the engineering phenomenon that is grass paved two.
So, that would satisfy the Fire Department?
It appears, based on the Fire Department's memo, that that does satisfy the requirement.
Now, the Board of Health hasn't had a chance to look at this yet, right?
They have not been submitted for official review, correct? They did observe the percolation tests, I remember presenting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It appears that, according to my notes here, that the percolation test that Mr. Rigo is referencing occurred on July 19th, 2018 with Health Agent Kevin Ford. These soils were determined to be suitable for subsurface disposal of sewage. However, the Health Agent's memo did indicate that sewage disposal system design plans must be submitted in order to conduct a further analysis.
So, you're proposing two, they're common fields?
That's correct, two common fields, yes.
Now, is this gravity fed or are they gonna be pumped?
There's, I can show you probably better. Yeah, so this is kind of split, this plan is split into two halves just for scale, but basically, each building, a triplex or duplex, will have their own septic tank and then pump chamber.
Okay.
And that pump chamber will pump into a low-pressure gravity force main that will get it over to the site of the leaching portion of the system.
And that'll be for both?
That'll be for both, same system. Yep, there'll be one system on this side and then one system on the other side. And this will be kind of permanent sold as a condominium project, so those systems will be common in the ownership and stuff of those systems will be common in the maintenance and all the operation will be, will be required in a condominium association.
Let's see, what are the, so we have the Fire Department and we had the Board of Health.
Yes, sir.
And has anybody else?
The Conservation Commission also reviewed this, and it does appear that, well, I'll read frankly quote from the Health Conservation Agent Brooke Monroe, "For development occurring within 100 feet of a wetland or resource area, applicants must attend a hearing with the Conservation Commission. Upon review of concept plan, the proposed development appears to be outside of the designated app buffer. Conservation Commission is recommending a request for determination of applicability to be filed to confirm the wetland boundaries have not been altered over the past three years." And I believe that the applicant has provided that?
Yeah, yep, just for the Board's information that, I don't know if you can see it from here, but on the plan's front, but there's a red line which shows the 65-foot no-touch, and then there's a green line which is 100-foot, kind of the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and that's over here and also on the eastern portion of the site. As you can see, all of the work we're proposing is outside of the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, provided they approve the location of our lines. So, we did file a request for determination of applicability, and that, I believe, next Wednesday night will be in front of the Conservation Commission to present.
And the towns engineers have reviewed this, and they did have comments, right?
We had an initial review on July, let me see here.
Fussin O'Neil.
It was, yep, Fussin O'Neil. Sam Hemingway was our staff liaison on July 9th. In that timeframe, Sam had since left, and we are now working with Andy Glines. He has a copy of the stormwater, the stormwater analysis report and drainage. They're not available to be with us tonight. They will be here, however, with us on October 9th.
Okay.
And we haven't received any comments from them on the second one. There was some initial based on a preliminary plan that we submitted, but nothing on the finalized plans that have been submitted before.
So, we may have more comments coming from Fussin O'Neil?
It's anticipated we'll have some comments, yes.
Okay, okay.
And as soon as we receive those, we'll be sharing those with the applicant, so they have enough of the time to be able to respond to those and prepare for upcoming meeting on the 9th.
And then we do have some affordable units here, too, on this plan.
Yeah, I'm not, that, I'm not 100% sure of. I mean, there is an inclusionary bylaw that we do intend to meet. I'm unsure how that'll be done, but certainly we know that there is a requirement for that, and we will meet those.
Because it would be, good to know the amount and the, and where they're gonna be, I guess, too, if that can be determined.
Yeah, we can certainly provide that.
Glenn, how many affordable units are we requesting?
I believe there's three.
Yeah. So, 10%, potentially under the inclusionary bylaw. Is that right, Mr. Cole?
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah, so 10%, so we would do three units. And they would probably be...
They'd be marketed by like a strictly law of the age and just be affordable, so that'll be outside of us and they'll work with Stephen and how that works. So, we'll be out, those three units will just be designated and we'll work with the agent that works with Stephen or however that all works.
Okay. All right. I guess that's all the information that we have, and I've asked the questions that came to mind for me. I don't, just open this up to the Board before we go to the people in the audience. If there's anybody, any members of the Board here that has any further questions?
I was just wondering about the reduction in the setback from 60 feet to 40 feet?
Oh, okay.
And why that is and how that might benefit the residents that live there. Why is that being requested?
Okay. Well, I believe under your bylaw, and I didn't know we had to show benefit, I believe it was at the Board's discretion to go from 60 to 40, but if you were doing an over 55 development, you allowed to, where you could present that reduction and the Board could make a decision on it. We are maintaining a vegetated, the site is wooded now. We're maintaining that wooded vegetation around the entire perimeter. We did cluster the units to try to keep them together, but given the very unique shape of the lot, the 60-foot would have been difficult to maintain on this odd shape. So, that's one of the reasons that we are going for over 55, and that will, you know, limit the amount of school-aged children, limit the burden on the town. It will, you know, maybe provide for a quieter development that's, you know, won't obstruct any, have any issues for any of the abutting properties, you know?
So, the 60-foot to 40-foot setback is where on the map? I just wanna make sure that I...
Well, the 60, the entire perimeter of the site, there's a 40-foot where there'll be no structure.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's shown as a light dash line is probably difficult to see from there.
It's pretty ancient. So, what you're saying is, is that if it was a regular development, it would be a 60-foot setback from the property lines to the buildings?
If it wasn't age-restricted, it would be 60.
Yeah, so now, because it's age-restricted, our bylaws do allow to go up to 40 feet.
Correct.
So, this isn't a variance, but, so here's the, here's the, yeah, so it'd be 40 feet along the property lines.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering why.
Yeah, it's in a bylaws, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. It says here, "Under Design Standards, Section 3960, particularly citing 3961 buffer areas, all dwellings and structures shall be located a minimum of 60 feet or may be reduced to a minimum of 40 feet for over 55 housing at the Planning Board's discretion." That's effectively the end of that sentence.
I just didn't know why we would want to reduce it to 40. I just wanna fully understand things. So, maybe you guys could answer that. I've never known, why would we reduce it to 40? What's the benefit for anyone?
Well, it's within the regulations.
Well, I know it's an option, I just wanna understand.
Yeah.
Who is it benefiting?
Well, I...
Mr. Chair, my next one.
Yes.
Buffer, it continues, "Buffer areas shall be retained in their natural vegetative state to the maximum extent feasible where the 60-foot buffer or 40-foot for over 55 housing or of natural vegetation is not adequate in the Planning Board's opinion to screen the development from adjacent properties. The Board may require additional plantings, earth berms, and/or fencing." It seems that it really allows the Planning Board to relax some of those requirements as long as the natural vegetative buffer is preserved, and you can still achieve the same level of screening at 40 feet as you can at 60 feet.
Why the difference in age? Because they...
To make it fit. You're restricted, you need only five acres to develop 55 and older, and of course, for anything more than that, you require more space. So, I believe it's just the intent of the bylaw to make something fit if or where it's necessary.
Okay.
It's not a bad thing that the Planning Board has this kind of discretion, because we've seen in other areas of our bylaws where the Planning Board doesn't have this kind of discretion.
Sure. Just in the, in the ask, it just didn't say why you'd be asking for something, and I like to understand what's asked of something.
Sure, sure. Right. Again, given the unique shape of the lot, it allows us to do the development that makes it economically feasible to continue on with it, so that's why we selected it. I believe maybe it's in the bylaw because it's a condominium-type development, so there'll be restrictions over the use of that land. It'll be common land, it won't be someone's backyard. Once it's developed, it'll be protected, you know, that 40-foot will be protected. It's more than what's provided on the other side of the line by the abutters to this property, so they don't have to maintain 40 feet and keep it clear, and they're allowed to build up to the line or work, use their land up to the line. So, I thought it was reasonable to go with a 40-foot for age-restricted development.
Okay.
Anything else, Jim?
No, I just like to understand why people are asking for stuff.
Oh, yeah. I understand that. Anyone else, Jim? Did you have anything?
Just a follow-up to what Janet asked, where it's gonna go down to 40 feet, is that gonna be natural vegetation or is that gonna have to be something you're gonna have to put in?
It'll, it'll be natural vegetation, yeah. And it's fairly densely wooded. It's a lot of tall pine trees and existing vegetation is pretty, is fairly dense.
Okay, because obviously that's what made you concerned that we have when developments go in, is the existing abutters. We don't wanna have, you know, a class shot to the due...
Sure, sure. Right, right.
Okay.
That's it?
I'll have it this time.
Kevin, did you have anything?
The questions I have have been answered.
Okay. There was one other question that I have. I know on the age-restricted, and maybe you could elaborate on this. We did have another one come before the Board last meeting, and it was about the, they figure the, the state figures the sewage at a lower level than at a normal household. Could you explain that again?
Sure, sure. For, for an age-restricted dwelling, the flow is 150 gallons per day for the entire dwelling as long as it's two bedrooms or less. And if, under normal Title V, it's 110 gallons per bedroom, so the typical flow for a two-bedroom would be 220 gallons. So, there is a reduction that's given for people who are over 55. And that rate is just based on real use. Those are all, those numbers in Title V are based on, they perform studies and evaluated, you know, what the typical water usage is by a resident who are over 55 and then, you know, typical households that are not age-restricted, and that's where they come with the numbers. And what they assume, say for a conventional system, the 110 they get by assuming double occupancy in the bedroom. So, they think that each person typically is gonna use 55 gallons per day, but they double that under, and that's the Title V flow, so it assumes double occupancy in each bedroom. So, with age-restricted units, you typically don't have those type of occupancy levels. They're usually much less, and you typically don't even see the 150 gallons per day as a flow from the site. So, hopefully that answers your question.
So, that's like about a 25% reduction?
Yeah. It's, you know, and certainly this site would support a lot more septic flow, you know. It's, it's a very low gallon per square foot of lot area that we're proposing, much, much less than even if it was a nitrogen-sensitive area or something like that. We're not proposing a heavy septic flow, you know?
Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, after you ask that question, so on the comments from Fussin O'Neil, they said that they haven't done a soil test hole for the drainage or septic feasibility yet, or has that been updated?
Yeah, that's been updated. Those were, they, I believe, were commenting on some preliminary plans that we had submitted for departmental review. They have not commented on the final plans, and we did do, in the presence of the Health Agent, we did do percolation tests and deep soil observation holes.
Okay. All right. Just before we go on and I open this up to the public, this will be our initial meeting for this. We'll probably have, it'll be more than one or two more probably after this. We, the Planning Board will schedule a site walk to go out to the site, just for the Planning Board to look at this site. So, this will continue, and so tonight, I'll open this up to the public if you have any questions initially, but like I'm, just wanna say that you'll have other opportunities, probably at other meetings as this progresses to also... as this progresses to uh, also ask more questions as time goes on. All right, is there anybody out there? And if you could uh, w- when you come up, if you could go by the microphone, give us your name and address. If you could get uh, ask a question to me and then we'll have uh, the engineer for the development answer that question for you.
Hi, my name is uh, Bob Gonsovs. I'm a resident, thirty-nine Leonard Street. I'm in a butter, right uh, right here. So I just uh, one point of clarification, I guess for me, this had a proposal at another time earlier. I think it was sometime last year, there was a proposal for the same property that I think was a forty-B process.
Yes.
This is not that same process for going through it. So this is fifty-five plus?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to understand process for one thing. And then the concern then is would still be, still be a concern is uh, we have artesian wells, of course, in all these areas. There's no town water up into Leonard Street and Lillian Way. So uh, there was a concern last time about just the entire concentration of thirty-seven, I think, thirty-nine houses in that area with septic tanks, et cetera. Um, and the impact that it could have on aquifer, et cetera. We had presented through our attorney at the time, um, a whole bunch of evidence that uh, other towns in other areas had similar concerns that were uh, were an issue and were under consideration. So I would encourage that to be looked at. I'm sure you're gonna supply all that information, but that would be my biggest concern frankly, is the impact on our water. And then on the forty-foot versus the sixty-foot uh, restriction, um, as you get closer, there are some houses here that even with uh, sixty feet, I think you'd probably see the condominium complex. So especially up towards the end here in in the cul-de-sac. So uh, I know that's how the bylaws read, but if it's a, if it's uh, something you can look at and and it's sure that we're not gonna have this big honkin' condominium in our backyard. That's uh, that's what our real concerns are too, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else, please?
Good evening, Bob Costello, uh, forty Leonard Street. I'm actually Bob's neighbor. Um, Bob touched on everything pretty much. I was going to be. Um, my concern again is I live, you know, my property line's here. That's awfully close. Uh, my well sits right here. Um, actually, a little even closer, but, you know, drainage issues, um, I already get a lot of drainage issues, you know, in my backyard, so. Again, just, you know, everything Bob said about the well, contaminants and that kinda stuff, um, my biggest concern, so.
I can understand that.
You know, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Eric Weston, one eighty-nine Main Street, uh, adjacent uh, butter agricultural property. Some of the things I'd like to understand through the process is um, a little more detail, which I'm I'm sure will be forthcoming as you you travel through Board of Health and such, and understanding the septic system. Um, so I mean, just rough numbers, I think there's about seventeen or sixteen units on average per system. Uh, that density is way outside the normal scope of Carver. Per, yeah, I mean, we don't.
I'll I'll.
Uh, but you know what I mean? Well, we have typical sixty thousand square feet lots with, so I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just, I wanna understand.
That's seventeen point three five acres, so way below.
No, no, so, you're an engineer. I just wanna understand the concentrated, long-term nitrogen effects. In particular for me with the wetlands, i- it'll flow by, but in particular, over time, it's been shown to cause heavy weed infestations in my tailwater and irrigation ponds, which inhibit my ability to use them appropriately. So I would like to understand that, cause that is particularly concentrated. Instead of being diverseed out, it's kinda particularly concentrated for those units up against a gravel bank, you know, within distance. You're an engineer, so I just wanna understand that, but ask the board to to under, to understand that. Um, I am curious um, uh, to understand uh, how density is determined. Uh, I heard the reference to open space or spaceability, but is it, it's not based on buildable? So we can have open space and you can look at it as acreage, or there's buildable space, buildable lots that come into, you know, Form A, frontage, or whatever. I'm just curious how how this gets determined. Um, it might be seventeen acres in size, but in and of itself, if it was separate from an elderly project or forty-B, um, it wouldn't support anywhere near that type of of density. Uh, so I was just curious how that, yes, is sixteen acres of open space there, but how that convolutes to thirty-one or thirty-two, how we get to thirty-two units in that. Um, it seems a highly dense project for our past experience in Carver. So, you know, whether it happens somewhere else or not, I just think Carver should understand that. Um, we do think a little, we're a little unique in the fact of the lack of town water and town sewage and um, I I think it's cautious for the board to to look at that. I I I don't quite grasp that. I um, I understand there's allotments made when you're giving something for the town like elderly or affordable, but. You know, I'd ask if I could be educated.
There must be a formula for this, if we could. Do we do we have?
Sure, yeah, I'll I'm going to um, I'm going to invite the engineering team to explain their their math. But uh, section thirty-nine forty of the the townhouse development uh, cites what's called the number of dwelling units. It says that the number of dwelling units, is that in okay pace? Okay. Shall be established by having a net usable land area, or the NULA that Mr. Rigo um, mentioned at the beginning of his presentation. Uh, plan for overall property submitted to the board, the NULA acreage is established by subtracting all water bodies, wetlands, marshes, bogs, and land within sixty-five-foot wetland buffer area to these regulated lands. Goes on to say that the remaining upland area is the NULA for the purposes of establishing the number of dwelling units allowed in a townhouse development. In Res Ag and HC districts, the total number of proposed dwelling units within the development shall not exceed one point two five units per NULA acre or two units per NULA acre for over fifty-five housing.
Okay. I was just trying to understand usable.
Mm-hmm. No, it makes perfect sense. It's a great question.
Concept. Is usable what you could build on without going this permitting route? Or is usable just open space divided by one point two five units? To me, it would seem to justify that you would have to justify what you could normally build outside of the different permitting process.
Sure.
And I only bring it up, cause it it, this density uh, and the scope of the project, while I think better as affordable housing, uh, is, I mean, not better as elder or over fifty-five, I think is the appropriate term. Um, uh, it's better. It uh, did come up during the previous uh, forty-B project that was entertained before the town.
Yeah.
Thirty-plus density was looked at as problematic. Um, it didn't go through, so, I mean, it didn't proceed, so. And then um, just again, long-term, uh, for me as an abutter, um, educate me on, I I would like someone just at some point, for the means, to educate me on the restrictions and the deeds of fifty-five and older and that they are concrete. Um, that in, uh, they may very well be. I just uh, would like, you know, some certainty on that. Um, somebody was sharing a story with me from the Cape where there had been lawsuits, I don't have the deed, but there were some lawsuits drawn where um, there was challenged fifty-five and older at a later date. Uh, and I just like assurances that that is not capable of happening.
Typically, we have to submit, or the the applicant has to has to file this with the uh, registry of deeds so that there's a record of of what's been, what's been approved. Um, and I can tell you at least in one other example where fifty-five and older was uh, approved at Chance Court. And um, part of the uh, part of this, the planning board's uh, uh, order of conditions require that if any one of those units were to change from the inclusionary requirement to the the um, uh, to a market rate requirement, that they must come back to the planning board for that approval. So it's typically codified in the master deed that's on file with the registry of deeds. Doesn't guarantee that everyone always does what they're supposed to do, but if we catch it, we do have a code enforcement mechanism in place.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And of course, our engineer will, you know, once the wetlands are determined, uh, whether they have to be uh, relooked at or reflagged or relocated, um, then we can actually see how much land is available for these units. And we could, you know, we'll look at that. But that's, that's, I imagine, is how you came up with this by the bylaw. Okay. Anyone else? Anybody else have any questions?
I'm sorry, one question.
Sure.
Is this um, this is off town one?
If. Y- yes. All right, um, I think we're gonna have, uh, I don't see anybody with any more questions. Would you like to say anything?
You know, I just wonder if if you would like me to respond or or you just wanna wait for next meeting?
Oh, sure. No, go ahead. If you uh, have any answers to the questions that that were asked, please go ahead.
I can I can offer some general answers to the questions, um, and I and I can offer more detail at the next meeting.
Okay.
But um, basically, as as I talked initially, it was a question from uh, one of the board members about the density and the the hundred and fifty gallons per day as opposed to the two-twenty. So even though we have thirty-two units, the flow from those units is expected to be a lot less than typical. So I just did a a quick calculation. We were talking over there. It's about the equivalent of these thirty-two, over fifty-five units are gonna be similar to about um, fifteen three-bedroom standard dwelling units. So even though there's more houses up there in terms of the septic flow, you're getting about the same flow as you would from fifteen three-bedroom, single-family dwellings. Um, because it is such a big land area, um, when you, when you apply that that uh, flow over that seventeen point three-five acres, you get what what is a very low loading rate. The state has standards set up for nitrogen-sensitive areas. The nitrogen-sensitive areas are either if you have a septic and a well on the same lot, like like many of you do. We we don't have that, cause we're getting town water, but so we're not considered nitrogen-sensitive. But we are right next door to people who are nitrogen-sensitive. Or if you're in a public, a zone two of a public water supply well, you're also nitrogen-sensitive. We're we're neither of those, but we are well below, we're we're less than half the loading that's allowed for for a nitrogen-sensitive area.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, yeah.
So do you need to be, do those septic systems or?
Yep.
Need to be within a certain distance of each of our lots? Is there a?
Oh, they do, yes. There's there's a, there's under, under Title V, which is the regulation three-ten CMR fifteen, which controls design a septic system, the setback is a hundred feet. Under, under local bylaws, that's increased to a hundred and fifty feet. So those septics are greater than a hundred and fifty feet from the, from anybody of the abutting wells on the property. Um, in terms of nitrogen loading, um, a lot of nitrogen load comes from the use of fertilizers. So I don't know if you use fertilizers in your um, cranberry-growing practice, but I'm sure if you do, you're contributing a lot more nitrogen than we are. However, with that said, yes, I bet you, I bet you, I guarantee you do if you if you apply. Yeah, um, the the um, the um, what we're doing is a condominium development, which is gonna be controlled. So we can control the amount of fertilizer that goes on. We're having big buffer zones around the whole entire perimeter of the property. Even though there's thirty-two acres, they're clustered around two areas. Those areas are limited. There's not a whole bunch of big fields of grass. Um, we'll use, likely use irrigation to 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 water the lawn, so we'll require less fertilizer to keep it maintained. So our nitrogen loads, I expect, will be a lot less than a typical single-family dwelling. And and again, our nitrogen loads from the septics are gonna be a lot less than the density that's required even for a nitrogen-sensitive area. And uh, in terms of density, uh, we did, there's a calculation within the bylaws, which is the zoning bylaw, which says you can't do a townhouse development in this area, in this zoning district. You determine it by first, um, uh, you establish the net usable land area for the um, I don't know what that plan is, apologize, but anyways, you you um, take the total land area of the site, you mine itself any wetland resource areas and sixty-five feet buffer zone from those wetland resource areas. So we have two, we have wetlands that are, I believe, located on your property. So sixty-five feet from that, we don't accommodate that land. There's wetlands over on the other side, sixty-five feet from that, we don't put any land. All the rest of the land, under the bylaw, the zoning bylaw, the the regulation which allows for this development, that's our net usable land area. For a uh, age-restricted development, you're allowed two times whatever that area is acres. And that's how we come up to the thirty-two.
Oops, excuse me.
So it's just, and that was my clarification, because usable is defined as just the open space available within the lot, not what would be buildable in a typical non-permitted status? And that was clarification, I was like.
Yeah.
This was Form A, you wanted to put up single-family, traditional sixty thousand square foot homes.
Well, lots, I mean, there's there's zoning bylaws.
Divide that into lots as typical in this town.
Right, there there's a a typical zoning in this district, I I believe, is sixty thousand is it, yeah, yeah. But this, this is another type of development, which is allowed for under the zoning. And because it is, you know, age-restricted and and things like that, it does allow for.
Buildable open spaces, total, and that's what I was looking for clarification.
Yeah, well, right, it's just, I, what, which zoning law you're applying is really, and we're applying the townhouse development zoning bylaw. And that's really, I think, I don't know if I answer, I will, I can have more um, in-depth answers to show how the nitrogen loading for this particular development will be a lot less. I I I'll make comparison maybe to that forty-B project that was put in front before just to show what a significant reduction we are proposing. Um, and 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 how even for the most sensitive areas, we're still well below what would be allowed for loading.
Do you have, do you just find the billboards that, exactly, or something like?
I I think they can, I um, I can give them to.
We have extra copies, I'm sorry, Mr. Rigo, I don't wanna jump in. But if if you wanna visit the planning board office, um, we have these plans available for review. They're also available in the clerk's office as well.
All right, I can give you my card and I'll email you a set two if you want, however you want.
If there, if there any more questions, if you could come up and give us your name and address?
Hope I'll get it.
Anyway, excuse me.
Um, Dagmar Ryan, fourteen Lillian Way. Um, I'm just curious, looking at this, um, if you have a house on an acre, the house takes up maybe two thousand square feet, maybe a little less footprint, but you have this all clustered. So I'm just thinking of drainage and runoff. So you're replacing the natural soil and the drainage, and you're putting like cement on it and asphalt in a house, and you're concentrating it. So we're not gonna have that sort of slow-flow buffering before it hits it. Right, well, I'm just thinking through. And I walked the back of that property, um, and it's over in Hill and Dale. So are you gonna, I mean, it's really, I can't even imagine putting a house on a hillside. But um, is this the peak where it drops? Like, is there a topo map that um, you can look at? Is that all right?
Sure, go ahead.
So, uh, here's, here's, the the existing contours are a little lighter. And the proposed contours are darker lines.
All right.
So it's kind of.
Are you building into that dip?
Well, there's a low spot here.
Yeah.
And we're coming up the hill, and we're kinda creating a flat area around these dwellings. And what we're doing is on each of the, each of the dwelling units, we're putting um, dry wells. So all the water that comes up.
The gray water?
Will will run off, no, the roof run off, which is considered clean. Will be, will be infiltrated back into the ground right near the, right near the structures. So we'll be kinda keeping it where we're doing. The the runoff from the road will be collected in a series of catch basins. And there's two um, infiltration basins on the site that will, that'll allow the water to infiltrate it. And and I'm, and 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 this is all submitted, the drainage calculations, I've demonstrated this and and state that I'm a professional engineer and I said that this is gonna work and not cause any drainage issues, so.
And then this, this, they all have this two separate septic too, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's a septic here, and then there's a septic over on the other side similarly. There's one area where the leaching portion of the septic happens, but there's septic tanks and pump chambers on each.
Yeah, I remember the last time um, a program came through, the septic was sort of new and experimental and which was one of our concerns. Is this um, the same situation? Or is this a um, you know, tried and true one that's been around and could we like call somebody and say, hey, does it work for you?
Yeah, this is tried and true. It's a conventional um, system. I, I forget, I'd have to look. I believe we are using a Presby, uh, pipe, which is, which is a, um, it's been around for twenty years, and it's, it's very well documented that it does an excellent job at, at, um, at further treatment of, of the, um, of the gray water that comes from the septic tank.
All right, thanks, thanks for your, and.
You're welcome. Any other questions before, uh?
Bob McAllister, fifteen Lillian Way, uh, up in here somewheres. My question on the, the septics, where you're putting two septic flow fields, that's confined to a smaller area. So all of that sewage is gonna be leaching into one spot down into, which is our aquifer, which all of our water comes from that same spot. And does, when you leach it all in, in that big of a, you know, sixteen houses at one time, basically, how does, how does, quicker does that get down into the water to affect the water? If it's that much more sewage going in at the same time? In one spot?
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be any different. You look at the overall loading across the whole site, and we're pouring the same amount of sewage on seventeen point three-five acres of land.
But you're, you're asking, yeah, actually putting it on one acre, or less than an acre?
Well, we, we are putting the location where we're doing it, but the, the, the overall loading when it hits the groundwater table is equivalent. It's the same amount of nitrogen that we spread it out onto, onto thirty-two separate systems. It's still all losing and, and, and by its way to the water table. So it's, it's not, it's not gonna, per acre, it's not gonna be any more concentrated at the property line than it would be if they're all separate.
You mentioned, um, you did some calculations and came up with, it's about the same as fifteen three-bedroom houses?
Single-family.
Single-family, three-bedroom houses. Well, you're putting that on seventeen acres of lots, which would be more than what the town has with sixty thousand square foot lots now.
That's a zoning bylaw, so the town says sixty thousand, somehow they, that sometimes they, you know, but that doesn't have anything to do with the septic density. For a nitro, under Title V, a nitrogen-sensitive area is allowed to load at four bedrooms per forty thousand square feet. So you're allowed to put, on a sixty thousand square foot, like, in a nitrogen-sensitive area, you're allowed six-bedroom pumps.
Okay.
So we're, we're way below that, way below that, probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, any other questions? All right, I, uh, I think we should entertain a motion to continue this, to this public hearing, to the next meeting.
Which is October ninth at seven P M.
Do we wanna do a site visit first?
Yeah, and then I think after this motion, then I'll, uh, have another motion for a site visit. We'll determine what, what day and time.
I think nobody's gonna do it while it's still open, that's all.
Oh, uh, yeah, we can do that.
That may be proper, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay, do the, do site visit for us, okay. Let's, uh, determine a time when we could do a site visit.
Mr. Chairman, just to remind the board that October eighth, which is Monday, is Columbus Day. So that may have some impediment on folks' availability. And, uh, Mr. Puriolo and Mr. Rego, uh, I'll work with you on the details of scheduling, the, the details of that site visit after our meeting tonight. It's my sense that, Mr. Chairman, you'd like to do this before our meeting on the ninth.
Uh, yes, I guess we'd, we'd have to do that, yeah. So we'll do that before the ninth. Um, are, are you gonna be able to, I think, uh, before we went out there, I think we're gonna have to have the, the road staked out somewhat, had certain.
I don't think we'd be able to do that. I mean, we can, we can give you the areas where the buildings are not at all, and the drainage, we can give you, the septics are laid out, we did the perks. It's only generally laying out the whole road that's kinda.
No, no, I don't mean the whole road. If you could just, uh, put some flags, say like along the centerline, every couple hundred feet, at least if we could have the, uh, the, uh, the cul-de-sac in the center. And then the cul-de-sac off to the left, and the cul-de-sac off to the right. And maybe, you know, at least two or three points along the center, so that we could know where that road is and where those.
Yeah, when, when, uh, we need that systematic survey out there?
Well, yeah, that's, uh, let's see, the, the next meeting is the ninth, so it's gonna have to be before the ninth.
Leo, Leo, you're looking for off on the road, that's so you understand where the road's going in passing.
Yeah, uh, well, I, I think generally what we do when we have a subdivision or something like this, and we do a site visit, we, we have some spots, spots marked out along, you get the, the centerline of the road. And then at the, at the cul-de-sacs, if you could put a stake or something out there, uh, so that we, so we could see where the cul-de-sacs are. I think, if it's possible, I know it's really thick. I mean, wh- when we had a site visit a couple of years ago for this thing, uh, we came up the hill, we came up to the center all right, and then it, I think going to the right, it was really thick. And then to the left, it was thick, but not as bad as, as the right-hand side. I think we need to know where, or what I would like to see anyway is, is, uh, we, we do have a house, and it has the forty-foot-nine, uh, dimension. We do have the house, that's the closest to the property line, where there's gonna be a condominium. If that, if that property line could be marked there, so we could.
We could, uh, we could address it that we only locate the building. We can locate the building pretty good on GPS and give you rough roads.
Give us like four corners of the building, that, that would be good if you could do that.
I'm sure we can get that pretty close, you know? As long as we can, it's a little tough, you know, right off of that without full survey.
Right.
They can get it pretty close with GPS and it'll give you a little bit idea of where everything is, you know?
Right.
It's just about a timeframe to get in there, depending on when you guys could do your walkthrough.
And then, um, if it's possible, if you could give us the four corners of the septic field, so that we could see where the septic field was. So we have two common septic fields, and then we, um, see, most of the buildings, there's one building that's gonna be close, and that's on the, 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 next to the cul-de-sac that's on the left-hand side. So I'd like to see where that building is in proximity to that neighbor there.
Which one is that again?
I think it's thirty-seven nine.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, units fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And, uh, if we could, if we could just mark that building out, show us where the property line is, and then we could see, you know, what, what, how close that is to the neighbor's house.
We can get it very close with, you know, with the GPS.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And then, like you said, without full survey, but it'll, we'll be able to have enough for you so you'll know where the septic's at.
Right. Yeah.
And buildings are close. We did try to say, pushing this all back to the cul-de-sac, it kinda leaves the most open spaces, we leave for that lot, for that, you know? We're not the center of that cul-de-sac, so that it wasn't bringing up that backside of that road.
And then there's, uh, you know, uh, then there's units eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, if we could have, you know, that, that building kind of marked out, and maybe show us the property line that's the closest. Put some marks on that.
Can, can Stephen send us something, just the buildings listed that they want, I don't know, so? Are you sure you got a memo?
Yeah.
So we know if we.
Yep, no problem.
And, um, see, the only, the only other one that's close is, uh, and I know it's thick out there, so I don't know how successful this is gonna be, but there is als- also, we have units, uh, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. That's close to. See, what, what, uh, road is that? There's a cul-de-sac, and then there's a house there.
It's Arrowhead.
It's Arrowhead, yeah. I don't know if it's possible to, um, mark out those and give us a bit of the property line and back of those buildings there, so we could see the proximity between that last house on Arrowhead Lane to those buildings.
My neighbor and I took a walk about two weeks ago, and there's been bulldozers in there, and there's, it's not as thick as it used to be.
Well, it was, it was just that's where it's going. The car test, we tied to get to the woods, so I should clear a path to get out there, so we're.
Camp, they all touched stuff, so.
We do have, we do, like, see, we do have some one back there on the mall, because we had to do the perks, so we had to, like, through the woods and everything. The only thing we have is three dollars each dance from, you know, sightline, so.
There's a lot of.
We can get you a lot, we can get a lot of information, you know? It's just, it's just really sightline through the woods.
I think that would, uh, do it for me. Yes, if you have a question, if you could.
I'm just wondering if the abutters can be present for the walkthrough?
Uh, typically, we don't allow that now. I mean, if we flag it, you can go out and visit it on your own time. But, um, this is just, just a walkthrough for the planning board. Otherwise, if we went out with all the members of the neighborhood, it's another public meeting, and it's just more difficult for us to, to handle.
Okay.
But, I mean, you, you could walk it, or sometimes.
No, I've been, I mean, we go back there.
Oh, okay. All right, all right, you'd have, you'd have to ask the owner if you could go on the property and take a look at it.
Okay. And again, um, like they were just saying, the forty feet, I mean, a stake would be nice. I know you're not gonna hit the exact forty feet or whatever. And when it says heavily wooded, I mean, there's fifty-foot pines, but they're not, you know? It, I mean, I can see, I can see the neighborhood straight back, you know, so it's.
Just so you guys understand, we have something that's, you know, a yard that's got a close proximity to it.
Yeah, I'm right on them. Yeah, 'cause the line that I see, this one here is, this one says forty point, whatever it is. But this one right here, looks like it touches the property line, like, right there, on that print.
We can see it on the other end, wonder.
Right.
Yeah.
If you can't, if you talk to the ministry, they have something.
Right, this part, and this is, uh, this, so.
But these areas are real close, and you have to talk, you know? We wanna work with everybody, and we're not trying to. This is a lot, when we, we looked at this before the D W A, and this, really, the impact to that site, quite now, drastically diminished, and we, we destroyed the whole, you know, we think like the same one. We're trying to make it work for everybody.
And then there's the drainage areas, and that would be the only other thing. Um, you see one drainage area as you come up the road. It would be on the right-hand side as you come up the road. And then you have another drainage area that's, uh, just beyond the, the cul-de-sac.
My drainage areas, what?
Drainage basin.
No, I understand, but what, what would you like to take the lot on elevation for? I mean, how, why, just.
We need to set the, set the line something on the center.
Yeah, I think that would be all right. Well, you see, there's the top of the bank is at one-twenty, and then it goes down to one-oh-nine. So, um, so that's about, you know, eleven feet deep.
It's kinda, that's a natural depression, so.
Is it?
Yeah, yes, yeah, it slopes, it slopes even further down, and it starts to go down. They were both pretty naturally depressed areas, so.
How, how wide is that? I don't have my scale with me anymore. It's about, see, what are these? Well, I guess if you stake the center, we could, or if you, I'm just thinking of either put some stakes on the top of the contour. So what are we at here? This is, um.
Down below. Oh, it's forty.
Forty scale?
No, 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 you have to double.
Okay.
Quite easy for us to get sound, and then try to get the top of them slopes up to there, you know?
Yeah, 'cause where's Chris have the slopes, so.
Yeah, okay, so it's, it's, it's only like a hundred and twenty feet wide from the, from the top contour to top contour, right? That's the center, that's thirty, double it, that'd be sixty. So then, this whole thing would be just about a hundred and twenty feet, so that's not really that big. Yeah, if you could just put one in the center then, then, yeah, we could kinda.
The entrance is pretty defined too, so we'll go that road, and give the center of that cul-de-sac, and we come to the top of it.
Okay. All right. All right. I think that does it for me. Anybody else wanna see anything out there?
No, we were numbering the buildings, so any building that goes beyond the sixty toward the forty, that, 'cause I know you were taking numbers of one, two, three, let's just, just every building that would go over the sixty toward the forty. Okay.
All right, I guess that's it.
Does that have an idea of like when you'd be trying to do?
Well, let's, let's talk about that right now. When is it? When is anybody available? So we have, uh, so we're in.
We'll change to the eighth, 'cause the eighth is a holiday.
It, it, it all depends on how people feel. Oh, uh, it, Town Hall's closed, the eighth.
Correct, uh, Mr. Chairman, although, uh, site visits fall outside, uh, it's an exemption to the, uh, to the, uh, open meeting law requirement.
Mm-hmm.
As a matter of policy, we typically do allow for a forty-eight hour posting.
Okay.
So that we can satisfy any legal requirements, so at least within the next forty-eight hours or thereafter.
So if we could schedule something, uh, in October, uh, between the, the first and the fifth, how about, um?
Mondays are not great for me.
Okay.
Mondays are tough.
Yeah, Monday and Tuesday, I mean, we'd have to be out there by, I mean, what, if it gets dark or a lot earlier in the hour.
Limiting ourselves to just about two or three days now.
Yeah.
'Cause, uh, you've got the sixth, seventh, and eighth, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. It's probably gonna have to be a Wednesday or a Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday would be, would be good for me. And it probably have to be about, it's gonna take about an hour anyway to, to walk this thing. So it's gonna have to be.
Daylight every day.
Yeah, would, uh, it gets dark, what, six-thirty now? So, I mean, if we scheduled it five o'clock, would that be possible? That'd be possible with you, Kevin? Say like five o'clock, um, Thursday? The fourth? Would that work with everybody?
I think so.
Does that date work with you guys?
Okay. So entertain a motion to, uh, schedule a site visit, uh, Thursday, the fourth, at five o'clock.
Move to, get a site visit at Zero Plymouth Street Project on October fourth at five o'clock.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion in the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, uh, now, entertain a motion to continue this, uh, public hearing to our next meeting, which would be, uh, October ninth.
Make a motion to.
Seven o'clock.
Continue the public hearing of Zero Plymouth Street until October ninth at seven o'clock.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in the second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And, uh, so you'll have those, uh, areas that we just discussed backed up by then, okay? And then, uh, somebody will be out there to, to tell us. Okay, great, okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, thanks. So we're not gonna worry about that. The plans here, if you're on the team, you're welcome to visit our point of view office tomorrow. Anytime during the day, and also in the course.
But next time.
Anytime during the course.
If it's preliminary, you can't cut until we know.
If everybody could move out to the hallway so we could continue the meeting, please? Thank you.
Oh, no, oh, God.
Right, is that what he's doing, or is he...
I'd be, maybe he lost his candy crush.
All right, on other business, let's move on to planning board member notes. Does anybody have anything they would like to say this evening?
No, nothing, nothing. Just next meeting will be more, will be busier.
I had a resident raise a concern to me about the sign that Edaville put up on Route fifty-eight down there.
I think we're gonna discuss that later on
Okay.
under planning director notes.
Okay, he had brought that up, and, because then I wanted to follow up on the drop zone sign too, that we had brought up a couple meetings ago, what the status is on that.
Mr. Chair, if it pleases you, I can answer those questions now.
If everybody could move out to the hallway, please, so we could continue the meeting? Thank you very much.
Insofar as Edaville is concerned, we did reach out to Edaville. It does appear that there is an inconsistency in the design for what's up presently and what was approved by the planning board. Our zoning bylaws require that any amendment, alteration of any kind to a sign has to come back to us for special permit. My expectation is that we'll be hearing from Edaville when they appear before our board on our next meeting to discuss the parking lots. So this has been addressed to them, and I expect that we'll have some kind of a, some kind of a discussion with them. The drop zone has acknowledged, let me back up. The sign enforcement officer is the building commissioner per our bylaws. Bob Francis has done the yeoman's work reaching out to drop zone. He has made them aware that they have placed the sign illegally. And my understanding is that they have apologized. They will be coming into the planning board to file an application for a special permit. It does not excuse the fact that the sign is there presently, and they have been asked to remove it, at least pending the special permit and building permit.
Because in, when the resident spoke to me about it, I thought of other signs that are like in the island of fifty-eight and Tremont. All of those signs, I know that the protocol is that the building inspector follows up on those, but if there are so many of them that aren't getting addressed, what as a board can we do, if anything, to get those addressed in a more, I guess, expedited manner?
We could send a letter, nicely worded, but the board lacks any jurisdiction, regretfully, over enforcement of signs. The building commissioner is part of the planning and environment and permitting department, so we work very closely with Bob Francis. He's very much aware of most of those issues.
Sure.
And we're also prescribed, there's also a statutory prescription for how long we must wait to enact.
Sure.
Similarly, there is a local option that's on the books that I understand the community had accepted back, I think in ninety-three. Chapter forty, section fifty-seven, that allows for the town to withhold any permit or license for an applicant's, and also to revoke a permit or license for anybody who is in violation of code enforcements that hasn't yet been resolved or owes the town a fee, a fine, or taxes. So we do have some recourse, and we are leaning on that. Regretfully though, we do not have the jurisdiction or the authority to go out and remove signs.
Okay. And then on a positive sign note, I saw the one at Deacon's that we approved about the flowers, I thought it looked great. So we'll end it on a good note, good sign note, so...
The board did a great job.
I thought it looked like a nice sign.
That's good.
Yeah, it fits in with the natural scenery.
I thought it was well done. Good job, guys.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Just, go ahead.
I just, as most people know, September is childhood awareness, cancer awareness month. And we have two events going on in Cover. This weekend, Friday, is the kids in school be go gold, where they'll all wear gold to, in reference to that. And then on Saturday is the light-up, the night in Cover where everybody lights up the luminaries. And so if anyone needs any information, it's all on Facebook, and they can contact me or Emily Slavin, who's in charge of all that. There's also going to be one more thing, a Go-Go Lemonade stand at ten Weston Street in Cover from twelve-thirty to three. And all the proceeds go to the childhood cancer awareness, so support is welcome.
Mr. Hoffman, the date on that last one, I missed.
The...
The Go-Go?
Go-Go Lemonade?
The Go-Go Lemonade is Saturday, the twenty-ninth, from, it starts at ten AM. And then the light-up, the light is at five o'clock on the twenty-ninth. Twenty-eighth is when the school be go gold. So all the public school children are gonna be wearing gold, so. It's nice community when we get together for that. It's happened the last couple of years, and it's really nice to see.
I'm happy to hear that. I've been dressing my son for the last two, it's the gold, I know it's Friday, you have to wear the gold. And he said, "Mom, I've worn it twice now, you're crazy." So I'm glad now, I'll have to tell him this Friday, it's for real.
This Friday.
He had dress rehearsal. Yeah, I've been slipping lately. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. Kevin, did you have some?
I know it, this might have already been addressed, so I apologize, but I know at some point Will had asked, I know he's not here because he had, had himself removed. But we had a new business in town right at the end of Lillian Way, and there was a sign that had gone in. I don't know what became of that, you know, as well. Did I miss that, there's a beautiful new sign right across the street from Ground Effects on Main Street that went in for, is it Allied Auto Parts, Lori's Haircuts?
Yeah, that's Tremont, yeah, that had come before us.
That's very nice.
Yeah, I forgot about that one.
So I wanted to comment on that being very classy and looked very, very well done. But the other...
The pain management sign?
The pain management?
Yep, so we have been unable to, just to refresh the board's memory and for our audience at home, a sign was approved with the condition that, that a representative of public safety and myself go to the site to stake out where the outer perimeters of that sign would be. It was installed in an area that was just a little bit closer to the road than the outermost perimeter of the sign was represented to Jesse Boyle and I when we visited the site. We asked that the site be, that the sign be moved further back so that it increases the visibility as folks are coming down Lillian and onto Main Street. I've experienced it myself, it is far too close to the road, in my opinion, especially for a lower vehicle or a sedan. We've been unable, and as a matter of fact also, the sign was installed without a building permit, which is of course a condition of all of our sign permits. That said, we've reached out to the applicant, and he has been non-responsive. And so Bob Francis, our building commissioner, has been working with the doctor who is operating at that site. He was aghast to learn that it was not compliant, and he has committed to also working with us to reach out to the installer so that we can have that remedied.
Okay.
To jump on the sign bandwagon, so I don't ask this all the time, can we do something to strengthen or change the bylaw so we can kind of take these signs down without having to leave them up for months and months of advertising and other stuff that shouldn't be there?
We can explore that with town council. I don't have an answer for you for that, especially if a sign is in a private, a private...
Sure.
Parcel.
Sure.
For signs that are in public rights of way, I'd certainly very much like to achieve that as well. But I'll bring this to town council to see if there's anything that we can do to remove signs that are non-compliant.
Yeah, I know it's a shared frustration to know. We're working on it, but it's still there, you're still benefiting, so, okay.
All right, thank you. Planning director notes. Do you have anything additional?
Think that about resolve what we got to talk about this evening, Mr. Chair.
It was under Ricketts Pond Business Pack? You have, it said planning director notes, Ricketts Pond Business Pack.
That may be a typo. The last issue that I recall with Ricketts Pond, as I'm recalling, Cara, may I borrow your packet?
Sure. Sure.
My folder doesn't have a note in here for Ricketts Pond. My recollection, Mr. Chair, the last issue that I think we had, oh, I am recalling. Frankly, the reason we didn't receive the formal request for a waiver. Part of the requirement for observation ditches is that it be drilled down five feet or to the bedrock, whichever is less. And because the topography of the site, it would really mean that they have to drill down forty-five feet so that they can get to the grade at which the road would be. However, as I mentioned, the site is not conducive to achieving that as yet. We have not received a formal request for a waiver, so my apologies. I didn't have that notation in my packet this afternoon.
All right. Okay, next we have the minutes of September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Like, one thing I wanted to add to those in the discussion about the the townhouse thing going in off of South Meadow when they, the next fifty-five-plus thing, when they wanted to change it to the hundred and eight people per two unit, I just wanted it to be added that the original plan was for nineteen single-family homes because they kept stressing that nineteen single-family homes would have more impact than the amount of townhomes they were putting in. So I just wanted that noted in minutes. Because it says ten lots versus nineteen, but it didn't specify what the nineteen lots were gonna be. So that would be my one addition.
Anything else?
I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that the packs were out Thursday, and I was able to go through it and actually read it over the weekend and not read it fifteen minutes before coming in because it was all right there for us to view. A fine job.
Well, thank you, Ms. Robinson, and thank you for taking the time to commit part of your weekend to reviewing those. The staff works very hard to compile those, and Joe Martins deserves a lot of credit for making sure that we're very well prepared.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of September eleventh.
With the...
With the addition of what...
Yeah, just add that it was, instead of fifty-four units, it was nineteen single-family homes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second.
Have a motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next meeting date.
October ninth.
October ninth. And entertain a motion for adjournment. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I did that backwards.
Have a motion to second?
I'll second, Kevin's up, motion to adjourn.
So have a motion in the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone.